Hi, Matt.
That would help. Hey, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
There we go. Great. We haven't done this rig since the business launch party last week, so I'm resetting.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself.
All right. Yep, I made you co-host up on here, so have that transient occupancy tax presentation up ready on your side.
Okay, I popped it up.
Just share that from yours when we get to it.
Okay, that works for me.
Thank you very much.
Um, I have a question. Some of it is a little bit sensitive right now.
What is?
Some of the data is a little bit sensitive because it's left to right next to businesses.
Oh, sure. Then just look at it on your side. I won't make you host for that and you can talk about it. And then generalize it, but yeah, we don't want to say exactly how much anybody's anybody's making.
Okay, I'll just keep my camera on and have the conversation.
There you go. Good call. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. You're watching the meeting recording and stream for the Town of Scottsville Planning Commission meeting on May 2nd, 2022. We're here at the Scottsville Town Hall, 401 Valley Street. And this meeting is open to the public in compliance with Virginia Open Meeting Laws and the State Freedom of Information Act. We're still assembling our quorum and getting our planning commission set for this evening's meeting. So I'll go ahead and mute this line now while we get set up. We'll come to order at 7 o'clock local time, which is in nine minutes. So on the recording, you can skip ahead nine minutes and they'll see us come to order. Thank you very much.
So low tonight? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do we have a quorum? Do we need to do a roll?
Not a trade you do.
Thank you. Let's see if we can agree to an agenda. I know in the past I've asked if there's applicants, we try to move them up to address any, to address the applicants before we do other matters on the agenda that don't require folks from the outside. However, in this case, because we're talking about tourist lodgings and that's old business, I would like to continue that conversation before we have our first application.
Okay, but would you like four APM?
So I think, so I like the agenda, the way it's laid out right here.
Can I put a wrench in? We had a discussion about sidewalks. And we had a discussion about, you know, whatever happened to the study that we did about making Scottsville more a walkable town? So I would like to talk about that and make a decision on where we want to move forward with that. It just, it never was a motion. And so I kind of want to enact that conversation.
A sidewalk discussion on background with this new business, 5B?
Yeah, I don't know what's most appropriate. I assume that it would be just to add it to the agenda and talk about it then.
Well, we, we wanted to see some sort of proposal for an ordinance change to make, to make that a part of future proposals, future development proposals. So what would you like to see from us to get this on our agenda?
Oh, I see. In the, in the context of future applications?
Yeah, I didn't know where it was going to go actually, but yes, that would be the most appropriate, I think.
You're talking about?
We had a discussion about tiger fuels and there was a big question mark as to whether it was in the ordinance. The ordinance is kind of it.
Yes.
So, but there are 15 references to the word sidewalk. And so I'm wondering if any of what I was trying to get across before we approved the preliminary plan, if there was anything missing from our conversation, information you didn't know.
That would be relevant to the tiger fuel site plan.
Yeah.
Okay, can we add back to 5B new business?
Site, site plan and ordinance. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. 15 references. That's interesting.
Well, yeah, I mean, and then there were a couple of double ups in the section, but for the most part, it's all over.
A motion on the agenda as a member.
I make a motion that we accept the agenda given the we just talked about.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, let's proceed to number two. Town council. We missed.
Really? Was that on a benefit?
Yes.
Are you funny grab those on? I mean, that's. I don't know that it was on the benefit that I'm trying to point.
I can't think of anything that we've had that was before town council recently.
I don't watch.
We had, we had a preliminary discussion related to the factory, just kind of introducing what's going on over here. We did talk about that and gave a little bit of a thought maybe that's something that is being looked at by the commission.
Can you elaborate on?
I think we were more talking about just looking to what the commission is going to be doing in, in preparation for what, what we present as we commit to the town council. This kind of making the council aware this is being looked at and also the idea that the building itself would be that's a creative or, you know, creative. So it's a new thing in terms of when you're using a building for multi-use that we're trying to figure out how to do so in a way that's different than it was originally planned and then have to do it appropriately for the town of Scottsville now is kind of the complexity of that. So it's kind of moving the council.
Are we making any assumptions that we all know about what might be going on over there?
No, it was, it's more in the sense of
Trying to get it going?
Well, yeah, trying to follow up on what, what's been talking about here. Am I saying it correctly?
No, that's, that's fine. And I've got the agenda on P D to just when you go on that. Okay. There was mostly budget conversation, so that's in there and the making sure there's budget funding for the grant study work underway. Those will be reports that come back to planning commission on flood plan map updates and environmental studies at the factory site. So that, that needs to get into budget to, to carry forward. That's good. There was also an interesting presentation from benefactor John Bowers interested in a spray park, supporting that in town. He saw that as a, listed as a priority in downtown small area plan and really likes that idea. So he was interested in supporting it philanthropically and he shared with town council what spray parks are and why they're valuable and council has the resolution to support that infrastructure to try to add it to the area park. That would be all.
So we, we need to give you budget information for our comprehensive plan. Do you have any budget set aside for us?
What I'm, what I'm hoping for is some outside assistance. I identified a $40,000 Robert Wood Johnson Foundation grant for planning projects connecting local policy to public health and structural racism issues. Public health community has gained a lot of ground on these topics. And I think it's an interesting way of looking at our comprehensive plan. Everything from, you know, sidewalks to mixed income homes and supportive small businesses. I think it'd be interesting to make a comprehensive plan in that way. So I'm working on that application that would fund our comp plan update with public health money. So that's, that's in budget, but I won't know for a few months whether it's awarded. If we don't get it, then we might have to do a comp plan on more of a schedule. But I hope to get that help.
Okay. So we have any other budgets that we need to consider for you? Was it too late?
I feel okay. There, there's still room to, there's still room to amend the budget. So if there are, you know, projects that planning commission thinks that we need studying up with, this is a good time to express ourselves in town council.
The only thing that comes to mind is the comprehensive plan. Were we talking last week about setting aside any funding for the the PUD? And doing with the community outreach for that or getting some help on that? Um. We talked about that really going hand in hand with the comprehensive plan, but I don't remember what we finally decided about. Oh, do we have minutes?
No, I'm sorry, we're on five.
Okay.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at for the PUD? Are we going to kind of pull that together with the comprehensive plan? Is that something that we want to put these forward?
It's, it's, it's up to us. There's nothing that says that we have to do a PUD, but we have two and perhaps more pieces of land that there's increasing interest on. And maybe we do want to have a plan in place to outline what we'd look to see for.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess it depends on us and how urgent we feel that that is.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we weren't looking at a timeframe, you know, a time limit on that. But I think we have a lot of work to handle this if we want to create that because we have to think of every contingency.
Well, and while we're on the subject, what, if any, conversations are being had with the new owners of the land? Have they had any conversations about Bird or Blenham?
Yes. And it gets to the importance and urgency of getting that budget regulation right. Because they're, they're moving towards the closing and have ideas and are very interested in what, what's the town's framework. No interest in, you know, wasting time planning and proposing something that fails. So looking, looking for that within and setting out a, a framework that what's the county really say what we want? And they're, they're interested in responding to that.
Who is they? Southern Development or? Who is they? Southern Development or Dr. Hurt?
So they showed in their final presentation, the town council, that they're under contract and posing soon, I believe, on all of the old Virginia company property. So the Virginia Land Company holdings built up over years include the two parcels of the factory, 60 acres. 28 house lots at this location. This was a subdivision approved 10 years ago and, and never built. This large tract in the center of town, which is 150 acres. It has split zoning, partially village residential and partially rural areas. And then a few more parcels around the edge of it. This one and this this one, a couple more. So 250 acres altogether. It's a big purchase.
Southern Development bought all of that. Okay. How much of that is the Van Cleve and how much of that is that?
How much is what?
How much of that parcel in the middle there is the Van Cleve?
Oh, it, it connects to Van Cleve nature area here. So the town 63 acres is this part. And then the other watershed piece, twice as big as Van Cleve, is this. The sewer line trail that we're familiar with runs on an easement along this edge of the creek from here to here. That's not town property, but there's public access rights on it.
Gotcha.
So the, so the planning for this area is a big important issue. And then project planning, the factory also very important. It's a whole work.
And the parcel that's dash 44, is that the lower bird that is now in the Virginia Outdoors grant?
Yes, so there's a, there's a conservation easement on the lower area of the site, everything that's forested and then this wetland park here. So that doesn't show as a change in ownership, but it's a encumbrance on this one.
Okay, what, what about dash 44?
The sewer company owns this.
Okay. Okay. And what's happening with Upper Bird?
Um, having, having gotten their zoning approval, they're now beginning their site plan process.
Okay.
That, I think a good comparison is the, the time that it took between Tiger Fuels getting its zoning approval and their site plan coming in. That was about a year. They certainly feel some urgency on this, but turning, going from the zoning approval to site plan will take a while. I don't think it'll take the full year because they already did a fair amount of detail work for their final town council presentation. So things like where the road goes, where the houses go, where the stormwater goes, some of that is already figured out. We're several months away from a site plan on this for sure.
Okay. And I've asked Matt to, before that site plan comes up for review, for us to have an opportunity to go over the checklist again. We already did it once with Tiger Fuel, but as a refresher about what questions we should be asking, what we should be looking at. So in a few months, we'll have that before us again.
And that, that also gets to the same last point about updating that ordinance. We used it once and didn't like what was in it. The time is, the time is now to change it so that the next application shows something different.
Okay. I still feel like there was a piece missing to that. I don't need to rehash it ever again, but I'm, I'm concerned about the tiger fuel thing, you know? I don't know that I have the information that I needed to amend my motion from the last time.
I could see you, you felt the difference between the negotiating part and the technical review part of the role. Right? Reviewing a complete checklist is one thing and to say like, but I don't like the checklist. It's.
Yeah, no, I know. That's a completely different thing. I'm just saying, you know, she was very emphatic about the fact that if it was in the ordinance, they would take care of it.
Yes.
Um, I don't know that it's not in the ordinance is what I'm saying. I still don't know. And so I'm just saying, I'm not sure I have all my information. So I was kind of assured that we'd be able to bring that up again.
Yes.
During their revisions. And I just want to make sure that that is so.
Absolutely. They, they heard that concern and they're. Absolutely. They, they heard that concern and they're, they're not on agenda tonight because they're responding to that preliminary work and filling out the final details.
Sure.
But they heard the importance of the pedestrian connections.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll go ahead and move with that ordinance later to see where.
That's the one thing I haven't got to, you know, research each mention, but I think it's important. So, thank you.
Okay. All right then, thank you very much for that. I think we're ready to move on to number three, matters not on the agenda from the public. Or anyone in the public who would like to speak on something?
Am I on page or off page?
No.
No.
This is, this is a great time to introduce.
Okay. I need to come over here. You guys, I went to previously for four seventy-four, why I took a spell street. So when we looked at four seventy-four and four ninety-six Valley Street, which are the two-story brick house across from Van Cleef and the switching station. We had inquired also about four ninety-two Valley Street, which is the, currently has the beekeeping stores, specials, supply company, but which anyway, they were interested, because those three parcels typically have very frequently traded together when they sold. Anyway, we initially, they were not interested in selling four ninety-two. For some reason, last week, they approached us and asked if we would like to buy four ninety-two. And so we are the contract purchasers for four ninety-two contingent upon town approval of the plan for four ninety-two. So there is some, I don't know, this is a very, this town's an unusual long, I guess it's like.
I'm sure you thought it was usually long.
Well, compared to DC it is, but so. So I guess it'll come this month or the next month, we move to self-approval. So I, I think the, since our contract is contingent upon town approval, I was hoping just to get a sense of whether this was going to apply or not, because they don't want to, you know, drag them along for a long contract process and need to back out. So Matt, do you have my little PDF stuff?
I did.
So anyway, I would have applied much sooner, except for the fact that they approached us last week. So then I, I told them that I would apply Monday in order to not help them to like this. That's, that's why this timing is hard, because I'm a very chilled and advanced kind of person. So I did not need to submit extremely last minute.
Let me see if I can.
So what is the application for?
So the application, we're basically doing a little mini hotel in four seventy-four. And we would like to re, so actually, Matt, it's not going to make any sense without the PDF.
Oh, that's it.
So basically, what we would like to do is take the, the back half of four ninety-two and make it three additional rooms that would be hotel rooms for four seventy-four. And then basically that creates a courtyard in the back. And we would create a green courtyard where the current shift parking lot is. In my mind, well, it makes a lot of sense for us because there's an economy of scale in terms of cleaning and, you know, dealing with turning over rooms. I think it makes a lot of sense for the town because the town taxes. That it takes us basically a storage room and a boiler room. It makes it something that the town can tax and brings in people who the town, you know, all these businesses really suffer from just a lack of humans buying stuff. And tourists, I think tourist lodging, you know, on one hand, I know people don't like it when it's in a, in a house. But I do think tourist lodging in the heyday of this town, I've been reading all my Scottsville history. And, you know, it, it's really amazing because it was a huge traveler's rest hotel. And I think when, when the retail on this town, in this town was thriving, there were an enormous number of hotel rooms in town. And so I see, you know, there just isn't, in the age of Amazon, like that building used to be, the beekeepers are moving back to the, the Masonic building. And, you know, the idea that that, that that used to be a carpet sales place. I mean, the idea that that's going to be a carpet sales place again is not reality in our current day. They can't, your carpet comes in a roll and they're on soup. So I think that, I think it's a use that makes, makes it possible for us to buy the building and renovate it. And I think it makes a tremendous amount of sense for the businesses in town to have, there's, I think, you know, Napa and California are having such problems right now. The vendors are burning and whatnot. And Virginia is where it's at in terms of, you know, wine-related tourism. And I think that Scottsville's businesses should really be capitalizing on that. Because all over the place, people need places to stay to go to these weddings, to go on wire tours. And that's one thing we'll be doing is facilitating wire tours out of four seventy-four. So now I can explain what I'm talking about. Sorry, can I? Oh, will you go up? Oh, I know. Okay. Well, so this is, this is the back of four seventy-four, which will start, that got approved, whatever it was, last week. We closed the day after approval. So that is the back currently, and this is the loveliness. And then this is the back of that building. And so I think what we're proposing is a situation like this, where I didn't have a picture of the renovated back, but where we would put French doors out of the back of that and create a really beautiful little courtyard. In my mind, people are getting takeout from the bateau and eating it on the little tables. They can do what they want. But, but anyway, I, I think, I was just kind of quickly trying to put together a visual. I think really the tables would need to sit on some harder surfaces of life, so I think to the grass. But you get the general gist of things. And in plan, in terms of how this would lay out, so this is Valley Street, and this is the sidewalk. And this is that little cute house that just sold. Peter Sherman sold it to, that will be a little gift shop, which I think would benefit greatly from more humans. So this is four seventy-four, and this is that parking lot. And then what we would like to do is make a teeny retail in the front of four ninety-two. And the reason I'm in favor of a teeny retail is that when you talk to people about what kind of rent they can pay for retail space that is very small. And, but then they're in these giant unrenovated spaces where the, the rent basically covers the landlord's insurance and taxes, nothing more. And so that's why nobody can fix up these buildings. And so I think that taking a more urbanistic approach and frankly approaching it the way you would in a, in a bigger city in some respects, and making cute little retail that's really well-built actually makes financial sense. And I think it's really the only thing that makes financial sense, frankly. So you can envision that being like a cute little, I have no idea what, like t-shirts, you know, Scottsville, paraphernalia. I personally would love to see the magnets come back that say Scottsville, New York, Paris. But anyway, and then I don't know if anybody's familiar with the alley light in Charlottesville?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a trend of doing these little tiny little tiny mixology bars that do like craft cocktails off of alleys. And that's like, that's a trend that's successful in Charlottesville, but also everywhere else. And.
Only if you have password.
Exactly. So kind of inspired by the alleyway.
Oh, you got it.
I need my, my high school son to help with that thing. So anyway, the idea is that we would take one of those windows on the alley and make it into a door. And then you would enter into this cool little universe off of the alley. And again, I think the other thing that what I've noticed businesses in Scottsville suffer from is like you walk in and there are seven hundred and fifty available tables. And so it doesn't really inspire a sense of like, oh, like this is the place to be. I better hurry and get there. It, it kind of inspires like, oh, nobody's here, you know? And so I think that's, the smallness is intentional because all you need are six people and it feels like it's hopping. And I think that the town would really benefit from that energy and vibe. So that's, and I also, I think Dan and I have been, my husband Dan, have been brainstorming uses that are not direct competitors to existing building, businesses. That's the other thing. So we didn't want to try to put a direct competitor with somebody else, right? You know? That is the general.
Well, we'll definitely have.
And then I just close on an image of Scottsville in its heyday. Had a lot of people coming in and out of Scottsville, buying food, doing stuff.
But that building is where the X on gas.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
But thank, thank you very much for that. I heard this today, so we couldn't get it on agenda as a new business. And I can't give you a staff report on it, but thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other matters from the, from, not on the agenda from the public?
Oh, thank you. This is my clutch arm.
Oh, I applaud your ideas. Very much so. They're great ideas. I will, I will address it, but I think a small business front, let's just say attorney's office, you wouldn't have enough space of what's proposed to have a, a room meeting to consult on the plan. Retail, you're going to limit the type of retail. But maybe it works, you know? I don't know. I'm not the expert. I would caution also that the courtyard that was shown is a, as an easement, at the very least, it goes through, and for example, the Chinese people and the new gift shop.
The courtyard is on the south side of the easement.
Okay, the, the way it showed.
No, I can show you.
Okay.
I just made sure I was in full compliance with the easement.
Okay, well, I think we could, if there's any issues, we could hash that out next, next month and, and at the public hearing.
And would that next month be a public hearing or would it be?
Next month, it'll be a new agenda item, new business. Right. If, if the commissioners vote, are ready to vote to move it forward, it would, it would be a meeting in.
And I watch those things. My daughter has to be shot. And the next spot that's she's supposed to go back to is definitely not ready. So she would either be in a rush judgment, she'd be out of business. That's how, that's how everybody is. She's so two-thirds of the tractor trailer volume products in the last four weeks. And some of that had been hand-carried to the post office parking, old post office parking, because of parking spaces in town. So please, when you're looking at all of these venues, stop the, the tenants of the old dollar store. They were made to say they would not park on the street overnight for two or four. Some of these other parking issues, please address that when we look at all of these new different things. Because parking is pretty really pretty, it's tough. And that's why you have a lot of, a lot of people trying to claim the same spots. You know, Baynes has a lot of people coming and going. It's great.
Well, I would definitely encourage you to speak at the public hearing if, if it does move forward to that.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
I applaud your ideas.
Well, just to be clear, we have our review for this tape.
But if it physically weren't, I can show you pictures of what was in front of your place. The way the, the way you go, hundred pallets. And it's unfortunately, that volume doesn't fit just in that. Did you look to the back of her shirt, red shirt now for a while? I mean, she's trying to get out, she has to get out.
Well, I mean, we're also not in a hurry to get out, so.
Please.
It takes like five months just to get cool.
We're, we're tied on the community side of this.
Yeah.
Mr. Holt? So this, this will be on the agenda, item five B, but by all means.
I get it, but you seem to say not to speak. Something that's on the agenda, a public hearing, I would get a chance to speak.
Oh, absolutely.
But we're, the public is allowed to speak.
Well, and this wasn't on the agenda, so I appreciate you bringing this up for us. Thank you. And, and you can definitely speak to it right now, and we will also speak to it again as a body later on.
Also, I wanted to point out is that you guys were struggling with the sidewalks at the last meeting. And it does put in here that you need to find a legal position. Shall I make for sidewalk pedestrian walkers to turn able to just walk safely? To be between buildings on site and between inches of property. So that was available to you, so what we proved was efficient.
I shouldn't, well, sure, it's possible.
No, it's not. I didn't, I didn't know even. At the area meeting, I mean, at the architectural meeting. All I'm saying is that it's there, and my pop used to say it's bullshit that we couldn't do ourselves. You guys in the, on the tiny rooms, a lot of stuff coming down the pipeline. It's almost as if you can't rely on other people to tell you what doesn't really work. Just because, oh. And you guys are struggling with it. He wasn't presented to you. So this is my point. If you think you're going to rely on people to bring us to your attention, it's probably not going to happen. So this is something that we must really consider. I also want to bring up that you guys very strongly had a nice conversation about everything. And you asked the, actually the mayor, Ron Smith, to tell the town council how you felt about that. You were pretty strong at the end, and I think the mayor said, I'm going to bury you on that and stuff. Just to let you know, I don't know how many tuned into that meeting, that chat meeting. It was not, it was not a blow up. So again, for sure, the bill could be yourself. I personally think you guys want to be heard at town council, and you need to be there. Because you can't rely on town council and the staff, most of them blow up. And that was a big part of the conversation in that meeting. It wasn't complaining. No one had a problem with the project that was going forward. There was always going to be consistent, et cetera, et cetera. But that was not presented with town council. They're not aware of that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. The other thing, just looking at the agenda there. I think that's really important. I spoke before, I have put it out. And it's saying here that the experts are available to have this. And so we're going to create committees of non-experts. This is really important. You do have the ability to shuffle until the experts are.
Good point. We should be heard.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a good example to say that we should be at town council, what important things are supposed to go up there.
As part of our budgeting process, when we're talking about trying to allocate some money to the planning commission for something like the PUD, bringing in outsour, outside resources, is that something that we could include in that proposal?
Absolutely. That these are research projects that require a better check, to use the same metaphor. So let's hire one. And yeah, my degree's not in planning. I'm doing the best I can to trouble these. And if you're not satisfied with results, hire my help, please. And, and tell town council, this is what we need to do the work that council's made of us.
We created a PUD that was, it would it would go forward, you know, we'd be responsible almost for anything that fell in that category. I think it's too petty to really do on our own.
I, I think I'm in favor of updating the comp plan before we tackle the PUD. Because I think that it, it needs to absolutely be consistent with what we're, the overall vision of the town. So if these guys have to wait, they have to wait. And we don't even have anything from anybody yet, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, the idea is that a PUD. You know, we have a template that was created with the experts years ago, but it was created on an old comp plan and.
Right.
And needs to be tweaked, but it, we're, again, we're changing the comp plan, so. If we're, you know, it could take a really long time, so I guess it, if you want to do it with experts. And if you think that the bones that we have aren't good enough, then it's, it's not going to be ruled out before. Perhaps before a new application comes before us, because things are moving.
It certainly modifies to get along, but I think that's a good plan to make sure where we're going and then incorporate the PUD into our plan. I agree.
Okay, so right now we're talking about for a outreach process for Scottsville Plan Unit Development. So what would you, what ideas do we have right now?
Well, I think right now what's on the table is that we'd like to hire someone to be a consultant who has planning experience in excess of what we.
What outreach have we done thus far?
Just to the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. That they did the work for the town in the past and are on, you know, on call for these kinds of questions as our in-house public consultant. And unfortunately, they said, thanks, but no thanks. They've, they've grown in a big way through pandemic with, they're running a broadband project. They're running eviction prevention and rent relief. They have some, some larger area plans for other clients. They're doing a lot of the downtown work for Livingston, which is incorporated, and so they're, they're being the town planner for Nelson down there. So I showed them this and they said, we like it, we'd like to help you. But we're doing all these things and are also short-handed three planners, and we can't do the job, kind of job that you deserve for it. You should hire our private planner. So they gave me a few names that have done that work well. I haven't been able to price that yet. But the, the same kind of planning and engineering firms that you would see. To consult a larger locality on a comp plan update can also do this. That gets expensive, so I think what, what I'm interested in verifying is. What are the parts that you think we can do well internally? You know, where do we have resident expertise? What kind of outreach could you do yourselves? Where do you trust your current staff to do it? And what are the, you know, technical skills that we don't see nearby and we need to pay for? And that'll help me scope it so that I'm not telling someone, you know, making awardments from scratch. I think that would undersell the progress we've already made.
Well, do you think that maybe we could hire someone to do the framework or upon?
Well, to review the framework that we have, to see if it's still valid.
I don't, I don't know how much work's been done on this so far.
The, the PDC liked what we had so far. They, they recognized it as best practice work from 15 years ago.
Okay.
A couple of things in it have gone out of fashion in planning since then. But they thought it was sound bones, you know, it had been through their planners and engineers and lawyers then. So they stood by it as something that was workable, but maybe not quite on target.
Okay, so maybe someone to review it.
Yeah.
Suggest areas to work on, and then we can go and work on it some more, then maybe revisit that.
Yeah, but their advice was more like fine tuning, and we shouldn't pay $50,000 for someone to duplicate this work.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha. So what's our next step?
If, if you, if you agree with that, then. The, the framework that I gave, I, I think gets us, I think gets us there at low cost. Of the kind of key questions in it are the community goals part, which I hope we can do ourselves. And the technical review part, which shows me a little bit more. The first page of what are the goals, what are we trying to get out of redevelopment? That feels like something to me that we could seriously discuss, focus group style, and listen survey hall. And think about what are the priorities of redevelopment, what do we want it to look like? The technical review probably needs a transportation expert, an environmental expert, a builder, and a realtor to kind of look at it from all sides. And I would still hope that we could get that by recruiting still volunteers. To look at, you know, the contents of those applications and make sure that an application that we got under this is complete. Can I speak to the urgency of it? It, it can wait until after complan is done. The investment interest is there now. We've, with the, with the economic development path with mine on. I've, I've been seeking investors for this factory property since our comp plan was adopted. Since we said, we don't want this to be having industrial anymore. Okay, who, who does mixed-use renovations of historic buildings like this? And there's a handful of firms that have Virginia portfolios in Richmond and Petersburg, but then all through Southside, small towns too. Your Blackstone and South Austin and Martinsville. Every little town has a tobacco loft or a mill building like this, and many of them have been fixed up successfully. So it's not so hard to track down, okay, who does that? Scottsville has one of these buildings, you want to come take a look at it. So two firms that specialize in mixed-use renovations like this have looked at our property. One is in close talks with the contract buyer, Southern. So I can't give you that name because they're still, they're still in negotiations on it. But Southern didn't make any secret out of, they build houses, they don't run mixed-use buildings. So they're, they're keen to sell or partner on what they're about to buy. So that feels going, and that's very serious interest in what might be a $20 million project. So that's to say, I think as soon as we had a PUD ordinance that we were comfortable with, we would get an application for it. You can make that money wait, but the, the interest is real and serious and motivates me to urgency. If you want to ask more about like the project details, I'll say as much as I can without giving out anything to by here.
I think we would all like to know.
Yeah. What are they looking at doing specifically with the factory?
Apartments and small business spaces.
Okay.
To the, you've, you've seen the increasing demand for both residential apartments and lodgings. That pressure's clear, but even outside of the Charlottesville market. As depressed areas as Petersburg and Danville have seen these tobacco lofts and 1920s mill buildings get restored successfully. Historic tax credits are very powerful in giving you a 40% discount on your renovation cost. And it makes it profitable versus a new build apartment building. So you see a good example in Petersburg of Tripezeum Brewery plus 50 apartments. The Imperial Lofts in South Austin, same, same thing, co-working space, office tenants, cafe apartments. The apartment demand makes more money, so those buildings tend to be loaded towards apartments. You can get. Five times the rent on an apartment as you do on the workshop space. So they're heavily loaded that way. So looking in that building with its 15-foot ceilings, that's enough for a loft pattern. Keep the exposed steel, walk up to the loft, put the kitchens in the base. Save the front for small business expansion, like a daycare center, something that we see demand for. And load the rest of the building with as many apartments as we think our infrastructure can hold. And that makes a profitable budget. The closest example in town here is the dairy market building on Preston Avenue. Where they put the food court of local businesses in the front and then a big legal firm office behind it and the department building behind that. Historic tax credit supported onsite parking. Live work options for some of the trains that live there.
Has there been any talk about another road being built at that point? Cause they would have to.
May, it's, it's a, it's right at that, you know, critical mass. And so testing what does our current infrastructure support and how you get safe and effective access to it. You probably need to wait in.
So how would they do that? Is that? Cause that was one of the biggest sticking points for you getting upper first trade approved.
I haven't seen drawings of any of this, so this is, this is just me saying, well, where could we go?
Okay.
This is one way. One way that we talked about in our small area plan was this way. From the back of the building on Scottsville Landing Drive to James River Road. The next shortest path that only goes across one parcel is kind of this way. To James River Road across the Logan property. If you're really doing small scale and just trying to get a second access and avoiding this choke point, you can go through here. Around the edge of the toe of the levee, improve this driveway, pass the ballfields and connect these. That's what comes to my mind of, you know, where are the corners of the property that kind of areas can get to. But I don't know.
That, that kind of stuff would come out of the plant in terms of how.
Yeah.
That kind of stuff would come out of the plant itself.
And the, the, why is it beauty work? Because currently this, this building is owned heavy industrial under the roof and light industrial on the edges, and none of what I described is legal. So the zoning tool that would make that happen is beauty. We don't have a zoning category on the books that lets that intensive mixed use go. So the TUD accommodates that negotiation. And ranking those criteria like I described is key for what goes into that plan. So, you know, putting a top priority around. Safe and convenient traffic circulation. Tells a developer very strongly, I need to have the roadway in there. If your top priority were minimizing environmental disturbance, maybe you take that as a sign that I don't want a second road cut if I can figure out another way I like it. So our investors are looking for us to kind of lead and describe what we want. That if you can see these done successfully in other parts of the state, if we say, yes, that is what we want. We can definitely.
That's just one other thing to follow up with that. Usage in a sense that I understand is a fairly consistent usage. In other words, just say that it's going to be a factory or to say that it's going to be a school or something in the future. Those are probably ideas of the past, this type of thing that's common for systems, these kind of buildings. Is that accurate, would you say?
Over the weekend, I went to a wedding that was halfway between Farmville and Blackstone. And the newest construction in both towns is like us taking old buildings and putting apartments and small business spaces in them. And they, they bring millions of dollars to the city.
I think it's the right concept, I think going back to what has been set up here is ultimately make sure, or even what's been set up there is, how do we do it right? You know, what's the right speed? Obviously, the business could admit something happens, but how do we do it in a way that those looks at the use? But also determines that we bring in the right expertise so we don't miss something, you know, whatever, whatever, we all know, we all know. You know, and the other thing about it is. You brought a good point, because there is a point where if you need to have beyond that one access in there, there's certainly. Depending on how far you go, you've got to have other accesses. Certainly would have to be.
So are we, are we at a place where we need to have a working meeting? Where we get into kind of the nitty gritty a little bit more than, than this discussion?
I would like to do that.
Yeah. I mean, we're certainly interested in knowing about who we can hire. But I think we need to start getting a release and. Person through all of this to get to a place where we can act on it and be ready to talk to an expert about it. What do you think about that, Matt, Karen?
Well, that's why I was hoping to see the minutes from last meeting, because we did come up with some. Of what we'd like to see, for example, where are we at with the comp plan? And the outreach process, who did we, at what, at what point are we, I didn't take enough notes on that unfortunately. What outreach do we outline? And is, do we think that's sufficient a month later after we've had time to think and after the conversations we had today? Do we think that plan is sufficient? Do, do you remember what we wanted to do?
Have you got notes in front of you that would be helpful, Matt, too?
From last, from last month's meeting, correct? So I think it was along those lines. Unfortunately, I have them not on me right now, the last month's notes, but I can look at it for a moment, grab them.
All right, so.
Ken mentioned a literature, pulling together what we already have. There's been a fair amount of work on this site, so bundling that together, bringing that to our team. Here's, here's what we've already looked at. Face one environment, market studies, cash drop accounts, that kind of thing. That does get us a lot of the baseline.
And, and. Our, I mean, I think this would be a PUD for all available land unless we think it makes more sense to do. One specifically for that area or specifically for the Blenheim area.
And you, sure, you, you could have different review standards. And not try to have a one-size-fits-all club that maybe. And urban mixed use is different from a. You know, greenfield preservation approach, maybe those priorities are a little different. So I've certainly seen, you know, town examples of exactly that, where your downtown infill is judged by a different criteria as your edge of town expansion. So, so maybe that, maybe that would make your task easier by things.
Maybe be able to concentrate on one that falls within a total urban set.
Maybe, where you maybe put strong dark sky protections in this one. But, you know, you, you might be glad to have bright lights on a new ball, ball field down here. I wouldn't worry about darkness so much like that, maybe.
I think this is such a controversial area for the town, and it has been historically, not just recently. That it makes sense to have something specifically designed for this parcel of land. And it's so different than the Blenheim property.
There's definitely, create, if there was to be a second route, that's, that's a big concern that doesn't exist at Blenheim.
Right.
It's a big factor for that land.
I think in my mind, that's one of the number one priorities, is the infrastructure down here.
So how about we get together that technical research group? Local realtor, regional builder, environmental expert, agility expert.
We can put two planning commissioners on that without triggering special meeting rules. Are there, is there one or two commissioners who are interested in doing this, but a couple more meetings here in the next one?
If there's a scheduling conflict, would you be?
Yeah.
So is it our job to track down these people?
Would you like to?
I'm, I'm just asking how this works.
Could go either way. We haven't done this before.
Oh, okay. All right.
Who else should be in this technical group? For example. Um, I mean, we've had a number of people participating in past meetings who have a lot of great ideas and input. Should we? Should we keep it a focused research group? Should, I think we need to also have public meetings and make it something where everyone can give their opinion.
Right.
I also think if we're going to be looking at updating the comp plan through the lens of. Health and structural racism, we should probably add a couple of people to this list.
In the community outreach group, I would say.
In the commu-, yeah, or, well, I was thinking for health as far as like a technical. Expert.
Yeah, if, if you're interested in, you know, development that supports public health. How you know what that is, right?
I didn't know, maybe that was the mobility expert. I don't really know what mobility.
Do you know how involved H E A R R is in this particular kind of person?
They have not been so far, but they certainly could be. The health department director spoke at. The town council meeting, maybe in February and, and described. Her medical interest in the built environment, that if you. Make sidewalks and bike lanes, people will walk and bike more and that's helping for them. If you plant more trees, people with asthma and conditions aggravated by heat will suffer less. So the doctors are thinking about that and she might be interested in sending someone.
Great. And Shannon Strazner, thank you for bringing that up again because we, we've skirted around it and said that we wanted to make it. A topic and a focus. So thanks for bringing that back again. Let's, let's make that a priority.
Okay.
Personally, I, I think it's fair. So can we get both of these groups scheduled, maybe meet with the technical experts first and then. Shortly after that, have a community group where we can present some of the initial findings and get feedback?
What, what kinds of, what kinds of community gatherings feel useful? There are lots of different ways that we can try to take a pulse of public opinion and get input. We tried some, we've tried different ones with different levels of success. Thoughts?
I like focus groups.
Take, take, taking time to explain what we've got more and hear more detailed reactions to it. And then, and then hope that that's small number of people, choose your advice carefully so that the small number of people represents the larger.
Right.
I almost feel like we should post it on the Scottsville, the Shaping Facebook page. And it's feeling like those are the people who come.
Yeah.
At the time when we feel like we've got a lot of them.
You probably need a combination of both, you know?
Yeah.
People who are. Involved and who want to give you helpful input and then people who are objecting and want to get. Appreciate it, but both are necessary.
Well, and I think that what we've seen from. The research that we did on the Bird Street development, there's. A lot of the public input that we get is stuff that we've talked about or we had experts talking about. So I think more of an interactive. Having the technical research, research group first. Coming up with some basis and some conclusions and then. Bringing that to the public and letting them pick that apart and talk about that a little more and hear that. At least they know that we're doing research.
And we aren't starting from scratch on this, like we've heard a lot of public opinion on this particular parcel of. Land, so we can use all of that to. Help.
I think one of the things that I would say from a couple of different angles, this might be. Different that we think about as planning commissioners or even the public. This conversation is real. In other words, there's interest. We, for a number of years, I've been on the town council for a long time and. There were a long time we couldn't, we didn't have any interest or very limited interest or we were desperate for interest. At the moment, there's several sources of interest and. They tend to be seeing it the same way in terms of this idea of an excuse. So, but now the question is, can we create something that. meets the needs of the town at the same time. Interested part of that would be the trick to do it in a way that keeps the character of the town while at the same time. Keeps alive this opportunity. I've said it before, I was, I mean, I'm sure we've all seen this. You're, you're the perfect example. The world has changed in the last couple of years and this type of thing is a different possibility. Two years. Forward when COVID came than it was before. So the reality of this interest isn't going away at the moment. Now, certainly investors change their mind. A lot of it has to do with the willingness of the town and also the. The actual plans. As things have shifted, this is a much more real possibility.
How, how does the commission feel about. Working more closely with investors? I'm, I'm of two minds about this. One, one is that. We should keep any developer at arm's length and do all of our policymaking ourselves so that we clearly say what we want. Without any influence from outside money. The other is, well, they've done this before. They know what works. If we let them in to share their ideas and introduce it similarly to what Miss Spirit did this evening. Preliminary input, let's just kind of get ready for it, see ideas and maybe make a better decision together. If you have, if you have some trust that you're not going to be manipulated. And, and can, you know, keep your independence. There's expertise to share if you, if you let it in and I can, I can ask votes, you know, are they prepared to go public with their idea? Certainly, there will be criticism from all kinds of angles on it, but maybe if we work on our planning process together, we'll get something better.
I mean, just, just to follow up, Matt, just to say this. No matter what we do with this, there will be people who won't want anything done. So, I mean, I can guarantee in many, we will have people that will. We will never get a hundred percent support no matter, unless, you know, we can have, whatever it is, the perfect answer, it doesn't exist. So whatever we do, we can guarantee there will be people that oppose it. So beyond that aspect, I like the idea of actually getting a much more open dialogue. Because the open dialogue is from my part. It makes it, I think even for people who would object to it, they can see what's what we're talking about. They, they see, in other words, they're not going to be surprised. It's for real, like we're really talking open that this is what we think we're going to do as a real conversation. And even if people object to it and they will always object to it, they're actually knowing what's happening, so.
Open dialogue with the developer, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other part of it, I'm saying is we still want to get our experts who can help us so we don't get hoodwinked, so to speak, or taken in too far. So I, I think the open dialogue is better.
I'm glad we had some open dialogue about what was going on. Because that's what I was getting at before was what is happening? And I know it's in the, in the development stage. I know that they're still, you know, negotiating and things like that, but I didn't know. And I feel a little silly that I did not know that things were going on. So when we're vaguely told that maybe something might be happening, I just, I feel like open dialogue needs to go. On all our commissions and committees and places.
Miss Andrew, I, I've only gotten this level of detail in the last week.
I understand that. I'm just saying that, you know, people start to hide, that's why I was like, is, is anything implied here? Is anything, you know, taken for granted? I didn't really know that that was going on. Maybe I don't need to know that, but I kind of feel like we are one of the front lines on. This kind of process and I hope there'll be more open sharing in this kind of thing.
The, the difference for me of like, okay, what, what, what can be disclosed in public meeting? Like the, the, the investor deserves confidentiality until, until the point where they're coming closer to applying to something. And so we need to have a regulation in place. And so like, this is the point where I can say the demand is real. It's urgent for us to modernize our ordinances so that we can be ready.
Yeah. I can thought and I, I totally understand that. I'm just trying to, you know, just be honest about the fact that I did not know that things were, I didn't know the land had changed yet. So.
That's a close gap.
Say tomorrow, I mean, you know, a little.
So when, so when we get updates from town council, that is something that we would be interested in hearing. If, you know, if something's happening with Blenheim or Bird, it would be nice if we heard about that. Because it will come back to us down the road, so it's just, it's just helpful to hear.
Thank you.
But, you know, the, we changed the zoning last year on, on that parcel of land, so there will be. It's, you know, it's kind of to be expected and that, and because the market has just taken off. Although I feel like it's kind of settling a little bit more, but we could expect more interest in Blenheim too.
Yeah.
And because it passed out of, it's passing out of Dr. Bird's hands into a developer. People that actually want to do something, but when it instead belongs to it for another decade. Okay, so, so then my suggestion would be we start with the technical research group. Have with your recommendations that are on here, including a public health expert. Do we need a lawyer?
So, the draft ordinance is go through the town, town attorney.
Okay.
That's, that's a good.
Okay. Um, so he doesn't have to, he'll just review it after. If anyone can think of another expert that should be on this panel here and then maybe two weeks after that have a. Community outreach session and, and probably a series of them like we did with. The development over here where it was more interactive and we had cats because of COVID. But maybe have two of those or three of those so that people can have an opportunity to attend. I don't know if that's overkill for a planned unit development. We could see how much interest there is and. Well, we're not talking about an actual development. We're talking about. You know, people may not get as excited, isn't my thing.
Yeah, sure, sure. And I, I'm excited about the plan. I didn't really know about it, so it's still work, but for the best part, I think that, yeah, I understand.
Your opinion, you're right. Updating zoning doesn't get the same attention as a, as a specific project. But I think if we frame it as, you know, something might happen soon, help us make the rules so that we can do something good.
Well, if we're talking about updating zoning to include multi-purpose, that's going to be a little bit more. Interesting to people than just going from high industrial to light industrial.
Do we want to have an expert on. Like from Charlottesville or Richmond on structural racism in housing? What do you guys think? I mean, we, affordable housing was one of the main topics that kept coming up.
Yeah.
No.
No, and, and it has a real opportunity of being satisfied in the planned unit development.
Right.
So yes, I think that that should. Separation.
Right. What, what can be done within rules like this to make the most welcoming community possible?
Right. And what's been done in the past? That. Makes it unwelcome.
When would you like to have that meeting? Would you like to? Put some feelers out to see when people are available? Would you like to give him suggestions on when you're available and then he could work from that?
Yeah.
Can you guys email after the meeting or?
And I'd love your suggestion on recommended names too. I'll, I'll think through the role of that, but you should have that.
If you could think of any people that have been very helpful in the past in planning conversations and contracts, conversations.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's enough on that for now. Step report on forest lodges.
So now let's go ahead. You took, took a good time in the past month on the budget here. Thank you.
So just let me know if I'm not coming in clearly, but thank you. I think we've been talking recently in the past few months about transit occupancy reports. Or about our transit occupancy tax. Since there was a request from the planning commission to look at a little bit more into the numbers and kind of get a perspective. Of what our tax base looks like on our Airbnbs and our motels and our bed and breakfasts. I went back through our quarterly tax reports. And then a little bit of work with the help of Mr. Lawless to kind of conceptually. Connect what really the, for lack of a better term, I guess, tax base or market, whichever way you want to poke at it. One thing I want to keep in mind, I'm going to share kind of the bigger numbers and perspectives since. We are dealing with sensitive information of like the gross receipts of, of like local businesses. But after talking with Mr. Lawless and remembering, there is kind of. Totals that I could share between, so for like. For the most recent year, because we have just finished our first quarter and we will soon be setting into the second quarter. Our gross receipts are sixteen thousand. For twenty one, it was fifty three K, twenty twenty forty eight K and twenty nine, twenty nineteen forty five K. Just to give that.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but is that all businesses? Okay.
That's so that would include not only that conversation about Airbnbs, but as, as you more, as a chair. Also like what was considered, I believe in twenty nineteen, we had Chester's B and B. And then Lumpkin's as a most, as more traditional motel, but all those have been lumped together, including. Our Airbnbs in town. Beyond that, we did a little bit of math and I want to explain a little bit of methodology so you understand. The footing on it, took recent booking prices from online for Airbnb. And just totaled them and then made it average that landed at ninety eight point nine, ninety eight dollars and eighty eight cents. And then use some simple math, taking gross revenue from businesses through the years. So I, I take the business, their annual revenue. Sorry, their annual gross would actually be the correct term and then divided by the average price to kind of figure out a, a perception of how many average nights. That was one thing the planning commission wanted. A little bit of more perspective to go, hey, wait a minute, how long are, or how much of the year are these? Businesses having somebody sleeping the night? You know, at, taking into account that some businesses open mid-year, we have missing quarter records, it's five years, changes in the. In the economy or. Reality from even the pandemic, you can see that we do have businesses here that is me from about a. Third of the year, based off of this math to two thirds of the year. So at that point, it does become very reasonable and very understandable that there is. A lot of market sense for, for running these kind of businesses, I'm thinking about the price. Beyond that, I have. Yearly totals, but I think the most interesting thing is that concept. yearly totals, but I think the most interesting thing is that concept of, kind of what the size of the gross receipts are for this type of, um, um, business. And then the concept that, uh, of how many nights more or less, um, there, um, we have, uh, visitors in the town of Scottsville. Yeah. Is there anything you would want to add, Mr. Lawless?
Um, it it helped me to compare, um, what we were finding in our local data to the tourism market more more widely. Like, I I didn't know enough about the hotel industry to know if these were like good numbers. Um, and the, um, the average rate of right around a hundred dollars is a good hotel rate for the Charlottesville market. And I think explains why the demand we have is there. Our regional visitors bureau tracks that average daily rate as a a key number for the regional tourism industry. And yet it only goes down to a hundred dollar average for the Charlottesville market in the in the dead of winter. And it goes up to almost two hundred when there's a home for morning. That's the average hotel rate in Charlottesville. So people are coming to stay in Scottsville, not only because of the river attractions here in town, but sometimes there's a really good deal to be found compared to the Charlottesville market. So that that wedding might be somewhere else for the business conference and and we, our rooms are very competitive. Um, so so like Mr. Rival said, I think that speaks to why we're seeing this increase in in demand now. That, um, travelers are looking at Scottsville and seeing, um, a beautiful town and a good rate. So we should expect more of these applications to come because the market is there.
Well, and one of my takeaways is that the tourist, the tax benefit to having this tourist lodging is so much greater than just the whatever percent we get on the short-term lodges. I mean, people are coming to town, they're spending money in town, they're shopping at the Riverbend Boutique, they're eating at the Veto. Um, you know, they're buying gifts at Scottsville Supply. Um, we can't calculate just by what the tax is on the short-term lodging night.
Sure.
Do we have any information, I can't remember, so sorry, but, um, about the long-term rentals? From what I understand, there's been some talk about how it was not enough in town. Do we have any? Any way of looking at that and getting a better perspective on that? I mean, how many people do we have looking for lodging that can't or looking for long-term rentals and they're not finding it?
Oh, that's hardly much.
Yeah.
When apartment comes up for rent, it fills pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't seen those rents tipping up yet, um, but I'm afraid that's coming. And we don't have a lot of rental vacancy. Um, so I think the demand is there. And I I do encounter people who wish they could live in town and can't find a place. Does that speak to your opinion, too?
Yeah.
Mr. Holt, do you happen to have anything that you might be able to contribute to that particular discussion?
Yeah, I mean, uh, just about every week that it calls and be permanent. Not too sure exactly what the question is on it, but if you're asking, do people call me and want to know if I can find an event though?
That's more or less.
I have to say, uh, I can put you on a list. I have a place with three dozen families and people in town in the last year. And I think I did a pretty good job of that, but there's just, it's limited. It's just the way it is. And, um, but there is this massive demand. There's a lot of things driving it, which I'm sure you don't want me to go into. But there's a lot of things driving it other than whether or not someone has something available. It's just some community concept. I would, would it be possible to ask a couple of questions about this if we knew that?
Can I can I answer something also, since I have a friend with me? I'll say that the average turnaround for a unit is three days.
I just think that that's the other piece that we're curious about. And, you know, we're could, we're going to have to be looking at these applications, um, more often. Given what the town council kind of put as precedence, I'm wondering if it is what we wanted to, to set a precedence that if there was no rental space there before, that it's okay to have an Airbnb, but if it is an actual space that's been occupied for long-term rent. I I don't know if that was the reasoning, but that seems to be what that was all about. So I was wondering how we quantify that kind of thing. I mean, it's obviously in the urban situation on the other side of things, but we're getting a lot of these applications. And what's the best way to look at it?
And Mr. Holt, you, we've already opened up the door, so what, you wanted to say something more?
I have questions about, um, some of the Airbnb owners that are relevant, that's fine.
Go ahead.
Step up the mic, please. That'll help. It'll help us on the record later. Sorry.
I'm not too sure what the question really is. And I, my personal opinion is that Airbnb is special use, so we have to, it's not like. But my personal opinion is if it's my building and I'm willing to take a chance on a business like that, I should have that opportunity. That's my personal opinion. But whether or not there's enough rentals in town, I'm not too sure that's something this bottom or even town council really should be making a rule in them. So if someone wants to turn sort of onto a bar, as long as it's by right or they get special permission, I think they should have the right to try that business. If someone wants to put another gas station in town, if they want to fail or be very successful. I think they have the right to do that. The gas station's not so on a wide range, and we have a struggling business that sells not be. They have that right. So that's not personal. Uh, but when you're talking about, um, providing rentals for town, we need that. We definitely, there's no argument.
Yeah.
You know, and that's a passive thing that is adding housing, it's not going to pay the rentals, but that's another thing. You know, I keep pushing forward is our town is the hub for the greatest Scottsville area. And there's housing being brought in a different area. There's more Airbnbs. Yeah, we have five and three illegal Airbnbs, but there are way more Airbnbs in the area. I know of sole properties where their Airbnbs make fifty grand a year. That's how they subsidize their their house. I I don't know what our Airbnbs are doing. I have no idea. Because that's how well the landlord says we we own and wants to put into it. If you want to hustle it, you're cleaning out your place three times a week, you're going to make good money.
No, I'm talking about long-term, long-term, that's three days. But Airbnb is doing very well.
What I'm saying is that if you want to hustle it, you can make good money. If you want to rent it to one person for two months, Airbnb's lower income. Now you're going to cut the income of gas. It all depends on how well you want to do it. We have buildings that are falling apart because the landowners just can't take care of it. That is enough. That's not reflective of the business in our town. It's not reflective of what could be in there, it's reflective of the person who owns that building. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I don't know if I answered.
We solicited them, so.
But I don't know if I answered right.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Calm down yourself today. So it it's a good perspective that it brings up that, you know, maybe it's not our place to even think about that. I'm just trying to, you know, see whether we need to follow a certain protocol for these kinds of special use permits that are coming through, um.
I I would like guidance on my on my staff evaluation. Um, so far, I've given favorable recommendations to all of them because I see comprehensive plan guidance around mixed-use downtown, that there's not a strict segregation of the uses. Um, support for tourism and economic development and acknowledgement of affordable housing, but not a clear guidance on how to achieve that. And so I look at those and say yes, this application is supported by the company.
One of the, one of the things I might say to you all is, I do think I can report this to the town council, but unfortunately, the town council at the moment has gotten a lot more picking down on this issue. And I, on this issue, I would agree with Mr. Cole. I do think it's people's right to do so. And I think one of the times we had something where I was the one that's of the town council that tells you something. So.
Yeah.
So there's, so I would say I do think work by the planning commission would help clear the air a little bit. Do you think so, Matt, too? I think it's at least a little bit for the town council.
Yes, I I don't feel good making staff reports and planning commission recommendations coming out and then council voting otherwise.
Because right now, there really, there really is a reluctance in town council, which I think it's kind of the opposite of what Mr. Holt actually said. It's almost like, since we're not sure, let's say no. I would say since we're not sure, let's say yes. But but the make, so I I understand.
Well, that's what I wanted to do.
So coming back to us.
Yeah.
I think you all having, I said you all hustle, having a plan, it would be helpful to the councils.
Right.
It's gotten, I think it's flawed years, that it is a front to us and the councils are.
So the a special use permit is a right that you are granting. So it's you, you can't take it away once you grant it. Um, but at the same time, how much intervention do we exert over other businesses? How often do we say to a business, no, you can't open here? We usually say something like, like what Mr. Holt said, uh, if you want to open up another whatever, if you want to open up that business, I mean, that's your responsibility. It's your money. Um, I mean, I think.
Say things like, make sure you have enough parking.
Well, and but that's, I think that's our goal. That's where we come in. We have to, we want to make sure that people that do business here are good citizens, that they're providing something of value to the town as well. And I guess the question is, is tax dollars enough? Is that enough for your value? Or do we want to see something else? Parking, making sure that that's not taking away from our neighbors. Um, you know, we we have questions about lighting and noise and, you know, how many, uh, customers are going to be coming out at what hour, in and out of, at what hours of the day? So what what kind of questions do we want to ask before special use permits are granted? Or do we want to create some extra restrictions?
I I know one of the debates on the councilman has been what has been the prior use of the building. You know, is the building currently in use as a lodging or is it not? You know, whether it's somebody that's rental owning or whatever. I'm not so sure that's a relevant point. That point, then, I I can, I was the one. So on the other, on the others, on the other side, I don't know that that's a relative or a fair assessment to say what, I think it's a great point. I think if you take what what's happening at her apartment and her husband, they're taking something that's not being useful and then useful, that's a great argument to make. But just because somebody already has a useful building, doesn't mean they can't change the use if we can allow it.
I can see both sides of the house, though. Like, as a planning commission body, it is our responsibility to look at the culture of our town and and really ask ourselves if we are inundated by Airbnbs. And I'm not saying we will be or we won't be.
I know, we're talking eight right now, right?
Yep.
That are legal. But, yeah, I mean.
I take this information with a grain of salt.
I just think it it is our, i- if we're looking at the, you know, our our Scottsville planned use development and we're looking at all of these things, all of these factors play into what our town is and what the culture of our town is. And there are case studies out there that have shown Airbnb coming and moving into areas and absolutely destroying the culture of the community that they're in. And, you know, Scottsville is Scottsville. We're very small. We're not Miami. We're not, you know, we're not Charlottesville or some of these bigger areas, but I think that is our job to look at. But at the same time, I also think it's your property. You have the right to do what you want with it. But, you know, you still have to apply for, you know, clearly you don't just have the right to do what you want with it because you're applying for a special use permit.
Yeah.
So.
One of the things I was going to say, there's a a guy in my church who often says, does it have life to something? I would say that I think as a planning commission, we want a vibrant town ultimately, not stagnant town. And a stagnant town, I think it's restrictive versus a vibrant town is adaptive. A vibrant town to me pays attention, just welcoming to this, it's welcoming newcomers, it's welcoming to opportunities. It's careful, but I think part of the history of Scottsville, even the issue we just went through, the reason we've been stagnant, some some aspects of stagnant is that we have been reluctant to to adapt.
Right.
And we really need to adapt. We have to adapt and we have to recognize that gives opportunities. So again, coming back to the life issue, let's welcome new opportunities. Let's welcome new ideas. Let's welcome new businesses. Be careful about it. But again, going back to Mr. Wilson, I'd rather err on the side of allowing something than not allowing something. But again, in a protective way where we don't create something that is a paradigm that is different.
Yeah, I I do, I think we need to put together some sort of guidance and present it to town council on this topic. And I don't know if we need to get get a special group together, like a working session to come up with some guidance on Airbnbs in town. I don't know what that really looks like. I've looked online. There doesn't seem to be like a magic number. Like if your town is five hundred people and you have eight percent, you know, Airbnbs and you tip it over to ten percent.
I don't think we're in a danger area.
Yeah.
But I, what I was getting on my marketing data was that we have such strong pressure posts.
Right.
Um, that that the the pressure on rents is there and demanding rents is there. But we also don't have a hotel anywhere in town, and there are lots of reasons to come to our area to visit. And they're they're clashing because we need more of those.
Right. And I don't think we're we're going to answer the short-term or the long-term housing crisis with a few Airbnbs. Like, you know, saying you can't turn it into an Airbnb, you have to use it as a long-term.
There will still be housing rental problems.
There's still going to be housing rental problems. I think we do answer that question with the, you know, the spud. I hate calling it a spud, the planned use developments. You know, if we are looking at turning the tire factory into a mixed-use facility or we are looking at doing that up on the Blenheim properties, I think that's where we answer those kinds of questions.
Well, I'm excited to hear that there could be, you know, apartments, because that's, you know, that's the thing.
It's affordable.
That's the affordable and, um, long-term that we're looking for. Well, that's going to be.
And that's going to destroy the town. So the character of the town. So let's not worry about Airbnbs. Just kidding.
Okay.
No, but. But like. Right. And I I I keep mentioning every every meeting, let's come up with a plan to present to town council. So when are we going to do that?
Well. Maybe we need to make a motion to, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know how to make the plan that you're asking for.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's what I would like to hear. Do we have ideas for a plan? Uh, here, here's, here's my two cents. Alamooral County does not permit short-term lodging unless it's on your own land in your primary residence, not necessarily in your primary residence. It could be an accessory to land.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that is even limited to forty-five days per year. I think that's the number. So I think our town, we're a gem. We have, we have, you know, a beautiful town here. We have a water that can be accessed through. We have water that can be accessed through. Bird and Blenheim, and that's why people want to develop those areas, that's why it's ripe for developing, but. I don't think we should. I think we need to be careful about what we give away, I, I don't want to. Make this really easy where everyone's. Wanting to do short term lodging, and then we don't have the consistency of people to. Coach soccer games and, and kids to go to those soccer games, the community, the vibrancy of community, I don't want to lose that. So to play devil's advocate to your point, and also to use a metaphor that you've used in the past and how valuable that community is. So I don't have. An opinion necessarily, but just to play devil's advocate, there are options for us to consider if we wanted to put some restrictions.
That we're a member of municipal, what is it called?
Uh huh, Virginia Municipal.
So. So contacting them, I think would be helpful to see what are some other. Similar sized towns, how would they address this issue or add, whether it's. And, and also to understand who addresses it and that.
Oh, glad to, and we can get some good examples of recent action, they will vary widely, even from. Alamooral's very restrictive and Buckingham's very permissive, if you could put those two side by side and. See which one sort of appeals to you more, and that would be two very different approaches to how to handle this.
Well, it's just, it's getting data, it's getting data, it's getting helpful data, because it's real, people have done it, or, or it's proposed. I think that's helpful, that we sometimes refer to that.
Or, um, what's it Denver, what is Denver doing? That he mentioned last, Denver liken itself, or we liken ourselves to Charlottesville, liken itself to Denver. Well, Shannon, Ms. Strasser had sent us an email a while back about, it's a Ford's article. And I printed this out and you could test around, but I recommend reading the article. And this talks about some restrictions that. Cities around the world are placing, I mean, obviously we're not comparable to Palma and London. But, but they give you some ideas. I, I mean, I agree, we should have some sort of guidance and, and say as a planning mission, this is what we think is appropriate, this is what. Criteria we will use to judge applications going forward.
That, that would matter a lot to town council, that we have. Yeah, the other thing to do might be check with, I might not, might, we should check with ARB also to talk to them. What, some of the structure or some of the things that we do that. That influence, I don't know, any input that they might have on what they think.
Haven't seen much, but the, these conversions. Are pretty innocuous on the outside, sometimes you get a little sign that like, this is, this is the home sweet home place. And, and ARB has a sign permit, but it's a, it's a change of use inside the building, and planning commission cares about that. As long as the outside is well maintained, ARB tends to be fine with it, and. Applications like Miss Greer's previous one represented, I'm fixing up this property to ARB, it looked very good and there was nothing controversial about it. It was just a renovation plan.
Well, and it's a valid argument that. Short term lodging might improve the property, you know, you're getting your curb appeal, your. I mean, just everything, I mean, you, you'd want to put in nice windows, nice appliances, you'd want to. Redo the siding, repair the roof in a way that some of our landlords aren't doing right now.
Well, and maybe, you know, to Mr. Holt's point. If we could encourage some of these homeowners, or, you know, building owners who are just letting their buildings fall into ruin. To come and, and convert them into something that makes more sense as a business model, like Miss Greer is doing. Because maybe it doesn't make financial sense to convert it into long term rental, but it would be. Something more appealing to, you know, make more profit off of and help with renovation costs to turn it into short term. Airbnbs. So, you know, I, I'm always looking for ways, I don't know who these people are and why they're doing what, just letting their. Property fall into ruin, but there's plenty of examples out there. On Valley and Main Street of, of properties like that, maybe we could start reaching out to some of these owners and encouraging them. With our new guidance to renovate their buildings, get them occupied.
I've been in this town for ten years and we've been having that conversation all along about the vacant storefronts on Valley. Even these landlords are just letting units stay vacant for years and wouldn't it make sense to, I don't know. Provide a, a nice business storefront, but keep the rent reasonable and have a, have it occupied and producing.
If you could come up with the answer to that.
But maybe they can't afford it, maybe they can't afford the upfront renovation cost.
Well, I, I agree, I think there, there could be incentives somehow, or even penalties. I don't really understand why that hasn't been in place for not having. That storefront occupied.
Right.
I'm not going to tackle that today.
Well, do we have any? Anything that we can? Say we firmly support in an application?
I mean, I think we, it would be really great to hear from local surrounding communities like Buckingham and, and. Alamooral to see what's working and what's not.
And we can take that information and discuss it in a special session, that'll give us the opportunity to really brainstorm.
I do have to admit that we are alone, and maybe not according to mass, so if we were to. Propose it to town council. How likely are they to approve it?
Well, let me just, let me just reel this back again. The town council recently rejected some people that I thought should have approved. Well, I'm not saying that right again, but what I'm more saying is, they were saying they wanted guidance, they're like they're wanting. So in other words, it's almost. I'll say this as a town councillor, so stepping into the planning commission for me, it's been an unexpected lesson to get into that role. It's not an area that it's not forte, but as I've stepped back into this role, I've been used to things coming from the planning. Council and then sometimes we act as a town council almost as if y'all didn't do anything, unfortunately. That's, I've been on the council long enough to see that, so in this case, this is thinking preemptively, how do we actually help the council? Help the town, and right now, the reluctance of the council has been this. Question about what to do, maybe something we could do, maybe we have a joint meeting or something in the future to actually. To have a joint meeting between the council and the, and the planning commission to hear back and forth. So then, maybe we come back as a planning commission and say, okay, those three points that you all mentioned that are a reluctance will address those points. So that might be a, a good, or maybe the other way, I can say this. Y'all, give me your objections so we can bring them back to planning commission and address those objections. I know that, again, one of them has been the usage change from. If it was already, and I can't, I'm not sure that's a battle, but it is, that is, it's a process. The other one going back to, so anyways, the, the point is trying to create something that would help and make it easier for the council to. Make an easier decision. A better decision.
I mean, I know it's not always going to be an agreement. Can't imagine that that would be possible, but. Um, I, I think that it would feel more as if we had a voice if there was a collaboration.
Well, and coming up with some guidelines so that town council knows that we are taking these seriously and we've thought through what's. What we like and what we don't like and why, and what we think is beneficial for the town, why we're granting it in one case and maybe not another. Once they have some understanding of our thought process, then they might know that we're doing our jobs.
Yeah, yeah. So, my thought is just that we have some of these special use permits that are. Is there anything we can do to kind of make it a better process?
Unfortunately, this is a test case right now.
I know, and these people are like, oh my god.
And so patient.
Yeah, maybe we just deliberate it the way we need to.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know that we have any more of a solution at this point in time, but I. I just don't want to keep sending things forward as approved by us, just to have them rejected by a town council, it's really frustrating.
I, I, I feel that too, and having to explain it to the applicant. You know, here, yes, my, yes, my step report was positive and planning commission was positive and town council rejected it, and then of course he said, well, why? And, and so I, I went through our notes and explained the, the statements of the council members who voted no. Which were in support of the existing apartment, they didn't want somebody to be displaced, because that was a good apartment and home to someone. And they value renovating an old building and creating new rooms where there weren't any before, that's okay. But, but displacing someone from an affordable home so that you can make more money with Airbnb isn't good enough. And I'm as comfortable telling that to the property owner, but that's, that's legal.
Matt, to follow up on just, just one point, and this is just, I apologize for missing the obviousness, but. There is somebody in this room who has enormous experience in this chair, much more than me. And who has a lot of influence over the town councils, so I, I wonder, Mr. Mayor. If you would be interested in commenting on this a little bit in terms of what you think we could do. As both a council and a planning commission, because you have. Sat in this chair way longer than I have, and you are very familiar with the other side, so what do you think? What can we do?
Airbnb started becoming popular a few years back, uh, every time I saw an article in the paper, I tried to make notes. About what locality was doing, and most of them, I don't remember recall ever seeing a special use permit required. But I do remember it had to be licensed. Uh, it has to have inspection by the fire chief, fire marshal. It has to be inspected by the health department, it has to have business license. Those things, I don't recall ever seeing an article that said. Use for that was necessary for having an Airbnb in the home.
Maybe certain neighborhoods, if not others, to fix it in some way and buy right some and not allow another, still having to say yes, that's.
So you're recommending, Mr. Mayor, just so I said this, so you're suggesting.
I have to go back to our, our decision. Where our, our reason was across the street, uh, last council meeting when we were told, uh, that told us that we can. Have a best of both roles, but. Especially just the event that gives the owner the right to have Airbnb or apartment in the, in the. Space, small space, so if they want to apply to have that sort of vote. Uh, and not just limit to having a big apartment, but if they want to say, hey, I want to do one or the other of both. And we can, we approved it last time, we can do it again.
So is that, so I'm, I'm, I'm more asking you again, so what, so the council is here and I, I hear this. We don't want to keep pushing the ball forward, we want to, we want to. Do something that is helpful to the council now, so it speaks.
I think if you do have a requirement, some special use permit, it gives the. Owner of the, gives the neighbors the opportunity to voice their objections to having that next door to them.
It's a good point, yeah.
Maybe they think the, the lodgings will be.
Where was that, Midwestern, where, a couple of weeks ago, there were like three hundred people at this Airbnb and the shooting started. So, seven people got shot. I think, I think probably I suppose, especially is, is, is a good thing. Because then you have one record that's saying, uh, this is a business, and so now I need a business license.
So you're also saying, Mr. Mayor, so that business license, they have the health inspection, they have each one of the pieces. So if we were to say these things have to happen, which have to happen anyways, but if we say these happen. As long as there's not objection by the neighbors, then that's.
I think we have something in our zoning board that's about, uh, those inspections that we, if you're watching.
The, the absolute, the application helps me with things like business license and tax compliance, because I, I get to see them and you can go over that. But if that weren't there, if it were by right, we would still be responsible for finding them. Licensing them and taxing them, and also making the right introductions on things like fire. That your exits are labeled and you have fire extinguishers and everything, those things like that. So I think the, the basic health regulation and the basic tax regulation would still happen, it's just a little harder when they don't introduce themselves at first, because they have to go find them.
So was there any, um, any problem from the residents in town when the. Question was denied? I'm, I'm just curious if there were any complaints about.
The whole, the whole basis for that was because we were doing something good for.
But, we, we've had, um, Mr. Holt speak to us in the last meeting about the. Recent application that. Was approved and that had residences that will be taken out of the market. Well, somebody was living there until recently, so, but I hear your point, and that was one of the points that. Has been made tonight and other times that. The income that these bring in help landlords renovate.
You could give them either or.
So a landlord that's taking care of their home is penalized and not able to convert to short term rental because they. Are able to take care of the home and keep a long term tenant?
They come and get, if they come and get a business license or renting them a room out.
Why do you need a business license for a short term rental but not a long term rental?
Yeah, uh, why it's different in tax law, I don't know, it's different in tax law. Um, landlords have that protection, they're, they're paying income tax on their rental income, but they don't also need that business license. Just owning, owning property is not providing a lodging service.
I think we're just, just so I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think this is generating a little bit of a list, so to speak, so we want to have these things done. With a special use permit, that the neighbors to some level are okay with it. It's okay.
But, do we require a special use permit in town to convert your home into long term rental?
No.
Right, your, your, um, your house in a residential zone, if you moved and kept your house and wanted to take tenants, that's all right.
You're not changing, the zoning is still residential.
We don't and can't. Discriminate between the homeownership and the renter. Uh, the lodging use is a business, that's the difference.
We would need special use permits since we did what happened with census and turned it into three apartments.
Right, right. That's changing the situation, right, I was just trying to. I was just wondering if we could somehow just take the Airbnb or short, short term rental out of it and just say. You're applying for a special use permit for housing.
You, you could, right, right now, those are misaligned in our town, but if you wanted to rearrange them so that you. Didn't care about how long a person was staying. And if they're allowed to be there as a tenant, then they're also allowed to be there as a tenant.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
You could do that.
So maybe we just take this whole argument off, that like, we don't know what the person's going to use it for. Other than some sort of housing, short term, long term.
And some amount of time, someone will be there in a bedroom with a car. And if you don't care of anything else, then you assume that tourists and tenants have equal numbers of parties.
Right, well, because there's some tenants and. Long term tenants in our neighborhood that are super obnoxious, it's not an Airbnb, they're just obnoxious tenants. long-term tenants in our neighborhoods that are super obnoxious. It's not an Airbnb. They're just obnoxious tenants.
Yeah. People.
Yeah.
That would make our town simple.
Right. Okay, so I think we can consider this matter closed. Don't have, it was a robust conversation, but no actual resolution.
Well, actually, let me just say this, come back to that. I actually think we are making progress. So, so go back to where you said that. So, so the list, if, if I were to make a recommendation, my recommendation would be a special use permit that needs the health ordinance, business license. I think I would say we're still stating about specific things, whether it's a rental, whether it's an Airbnb. Then, as long as there's a process for the neighbors to express their thoughts, the neighbors express their thoughts, those thoughts are reviewed, and then it's supported by us, and they have the right to do it. I, I think there, I think we, we need to create a streamlined, simple process
Right.
that everybody goes through, and if they need those things, it's not, I'm not voting for it or against it, because I have some different opinion. They have those things, and they're, they got them.
Right. I like that.
I like that. Can I, can I clarify about what you mean by streamlined? Because we, we heard at the beginning, Ms. Greer does not think of streamlined, that it, that you streamline to, to go through each planning commission and town council, first hearing, a public hearing, vote, takes four months. And I, I have to tell these applicants that can't make it happen faster than that, because we're making a special law for you.
Matt, just, okay, so back at the time, it took a... As the, as the, as the town administrator, how would you, how would you recommend, can we sort of that?
I mean, not have it be a special use permit and some kind of administrative approval. If you give me a checklist and say, you know, if it meets these criteria, give them the permit. If it doesn't, don't.
I like that.
And then their recourse would be the board of zoning appeals, if they call it, hit it.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, what do you think of that?
I still don't think you give your neighbors the opportunity to voice an objection to having a motel next to their house.
So, so...
But what if you, what if your neighbor just comes out, because he hates you, and says, I don't want this guy to, you know, that's so subjective.
But that's, but that's... It's like any other topic we, we talk about, it's, they get to put the input.
Right.
We get to listen to them, and then we vote the way we want it to look.
So, so let's just say that suppose it's not fast, but we'll skip the speed for a second. So if we could come up with clear steps, so the clear steps are, again, meets the fire code, meets the health department that goes through, get your business license, there's a procedure.
What, and why don't we add talk to your neighbor? Get neighbor, neighbor approval.
And, and again, if the neighbor...
Or disapproval.
Neighbor, the neighbor thing allows it to be for us, and we might come back and say, you know what, that's just, maybe you're, let's just say the opposite of you, let's just say your neighbors are the ones you're, you're concerned about the moment, and we kind of think, okay, that's not a legitimate concern, we're still going to allow it to happen.
Right.
But we're allowing them to give their
Yes.
Their input is a part of the process, it's not the deciding factor. And then we, as the planning commission, recommend it to the town council.
Right.
The town council has a clear process that we've gone through.
Would we still, would we still do the notification at her?
I don't, I don't think we need a public hearing on these things. I think it's obnoxious and...
Isn't it different, so if you're running a business, like you all had a discussion recently about what ordinance is required to run a business inside of a residential area, isn't this the same thing? Because effectively, unlike being a landlord or a contractor, you're, you're running a business out of a residential area, which was the same thing as Matt's example about the people with the cheap act, in some respects.
Do they have the help?
And...
Because it's, it's a business question, not a residential...
Like more philosophically than...
If it's not a long-term, short-term rental, it's more about business and business.
We have to go through both planning commission, public hearing, and supervisor public. And also, you have ordinances that have to be not just a checklist, but ordinances that already exist.
Ms. Greer?
I was just going to comment that I think that's an interesting point, because a lot of cities, I mean, our type, a little hometown out here. But, so, but, you know, a lot of cities, the zoning, commercial zoning encompasses hotels. And so it's kind of a quirk of Scottsdale zoning code, that a hotel is something special, we would ask for on the main commercial corridor. So I mean, you could have, and I do think that, you know, the reason some of these buildings are falling apart is that I can just tell you, if that were 330 Valley Street, you know, all the work we're doing to the exterior of 330 Valley Street is my gift to the town. We will see zero dollars of that. Like, there's no financial case to fix that, unfortunately. It's just more about your own ethos. And honestly, the fact that you're able to do that. But I think that if you look at most of these, I mean, you would have a commercial corridor that had a wide variety of uses allowed as a matter of right. One of it could be hotel or transit lodging, if you want to call it. And then the residential districts would have a different set of rules, probably for reasons, because you do buy a single-bedroom house in a residential district with some expectation that the town has surface next door.
Right.
Good point. A lot of, a lot of commercial districts will have hotels as a by-right use. You, you know, you get off the interstate, you expect to see McDonald's and a Days Inn. Our commercial district does not do that. The hotels are by special use permit because of the larger impact of them.
Well, and because we don't have as much segregation of zoning. We're a small town. We don't, we don't have a lot of that. But I like the idea of getting rid of the special use permit for at least Valley Street, like those, that, the commercial spaces on Valley Street. I think there's more residential on Main.
That, I think that, that would have a comprehensive plan justification. You describe this historic mix of uses. All these buildings have been used for 10 different things in their history.
Right.
And to say, in the, in the short term, that's okay. Let them, let them be mixed up and try different things. And if you, if it's what we need to do to maintain the property, go ahead and do it.
Right.
Can you, Matt, take some of these, like formulate something? Sometimes for the town council, we will take our our weird ingredients, put them together, come up with something good. And this isn't weird. Our, this is what I'm... Yeah, this is the council practice.
Yeah, that's good. We're talking.
I'll try. I've heard, I've heard a few different options here, so it might look like a column chart with three options.
Right.
To see what you, what you like as a fix.
That'd be great.
I'm not sure that's...
Thank you.
You know, we could do, Matt, also, if, if the planning commission is okay with this, and I think it might be helpful to be, we might say, these are some of the ingredients the town, the planning commission has just looked at. Any thoughts on this? And, and so it might be a little bit of input to go back the other way, that would be helpful to us next month, that we might get a little input. I might remember to talk about that this week.
Okay. Unfortunately, you still have this applicant under current rules.
Yes.
Well, please, please introduce yourselves, and tell us what you got, and maybe that'll help us try to see what we need to do here.
Finally, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. But I think this was an important conversation for you too, because now you know how we're thinking and our concerns.
Yeah. Um, so I'm Jocelyn, this is my family, Austin. We own 345 East Main, right next to the Main Street garage. We recently signed a contract to manage Avon Hill, which is the, the wedding destination up in Howardsville. That requires us to live on the premises. So we have to move out of our house. We don't want to sell. We love this place. We love our home. We love the history here, and we want to share that with everyone. Our house is a, we're just tiny building in Scottsville. Great history there. I have been a property manager for about 10 years now. I also lived in the Air Force for seven years. We want to share this place with everyone and account with everyone. There's so many wedding destinations around here. There's so many opportunities for people to stay and actually get the history of Scottsville, not the modern, all these new things that are being built and renovated. But, uh, kept well in storage. Based off of little things that you guys, something that I think is important. Our neighbors, no one's up there in 10 months, on one side of us, so I'm not sure if they have any issues, but there are, there are problems with them, so they're not really there. Walkability, obviously, there's so many businesses coming into town, I know that we just gave some grants for some other businesses up. Me and you, and, um, yeah, I know, me and her are in, we're in some talks right now, but yeah, so we can't live there. We've talked about long-term versus short-term. For us, since the house, it is historically so old, we like the short-term, because we're in there every week. We live 15 minutes away. We can do the turnovers every week. We can see if anything needs maintenance. We can check, land speed them all the time, of course. And I've managed long-term rentals for a long time, and people wreck them quite often. You're in there for a long time, you don't report maintenance issues. You try to fix it yourself, or you just ignore the problem, because you don't own the property. So, yeah, we think that this location would be great for your baby. You want to bring, we're not going to be in the town spending money as often, because we don't live walking distance anymore, but we can have other people in there, just clear your weekend to bring the same. Parking? Parking, so our, we can actually fit, we did a lot of cars back there. We have a big parking pad behind the back of the house. Typically, I would say, super easy for cars. No one has issues with having a backup. We have four bedrooms, so ideally eight people would be max, so you're being more cars. But we can also accommodate that in our listing and say there's no more than four cars as well.
Which, which by the way, is a good example of conditions that you can apply. We had some discussion earlier about how can we limit this. One of your conditions is on the intensity of use, so limiting the number of bedrooms rented, or the number of people, or the number of cars at one time. Those are all numbers that would limit the property rate slightly and reduce those impacts. If, for example, parking all over the street is something you were worried about, you say, four cars and a party or something.
So are you thinking eight people occupancy max?
Yes, so we have three king beds, one queen bed, three queens, one king. We thought about doing like an air mattress, but no, we just keep it to the bedrooms. People may be sleeping everywhere in the house, so it's too easy.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the short-term rental option at 345 Main Street in Scottsville.
Second.
And you say short-term rental and Airbnb.
And this doesn't need a public hearing before we do that?
I'm afraid of that.
Right.
Thank you.
So you make the paper motion, the public can't make the motion to...
To schedule a public hearing at next meeting.
I'm going to go back to sleep.
No, this is just them presenting.
The only thing I waited all night was to voice my support. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just about to voice my support. It's a much, it's a lovely couple, and, you know, it uses money to like, to pay for their kids' college funding. This is the only way, and I'll, I'll, I'll come to the next one, maybe I will come to that.
He's looking at it, your comments are wonderful.
And, and we will have that in our record.
Yes.
And we, and...
We will, we will take that under advisement. Well, I would like to make a motion to have a public hearing at our next meeting regarding this particular zoning change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe we could have some guidance for...
How long is a public hearing? Because I heard you have a public session. What are the rules of... I need, I need two and a half weeks. If you want to, you always have the option to fast-track these by calling a special. Your, your next regular meeting is Monday, June 6th. If ever you want to do something faster and do a special meeting, I just need enough time to run the newspaper ads.
Well, we could do that, and Ms. Greer's, we could have a public hearing for you guys and have...
And hers would appear as new business on that appearance.
Right, and that's it.
That sounds perfect. Literally perfect.
Yes.
So what's your, what's your pleasure on scheduling?
A motion for a special meeting in three weeks. That'll give you your two and a half.
Monday, Mondays are good. So, um...
What to do with that, see?
The 23rd?
Let's do it.
Okay. With, um, with this public hearing and, and the other business.
Can we, can we also make that a work session for the PUD or the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yeah, as well. Because if, you know, we're
For the stud.
If we're going to have an extra meeting, want to make it worth it. All right, so May 23rd, you said? Yeah, and that's nice, because the next meeting, the next week is Memorial Day, so it's, and then we're meeting the following week, so that's good. It's not two meetings in a week.
No, that's good.
May 23rd. Yes.
Seven is your...
We promise not to make it this excruciating.
Yeah. So anything else from us?
Thank you so much for sticking around.
All right, so next up. So...
So there's been work on this before, the sidewalks, right?
Yeah, and...
And do we have, can we have access to the information? Is it all part of town council or planning commission, or was it something that you did and didn't have?
Fair amount of this predates me by a long time.
Okay.
Want to talk to some of the issues, council, council information, sidewalk, sir?
When I was planning a mission, decided that it would be really great to have a sidewalk on the funeral, the Dollar General, and then the Dollar General up to Food Line.
I'd love to be able to walk up this street, so to address.
So we went through all kinds of studies and all kinds of, I think, all the charts and all of that. And the short version is, here, from Funeral Home to Dollar, Dollar General was 1.2 million, and from Upfield to Food Line was over 800,000. $2 million to get to Food Line.
I think that was presented at my first day of work.
But that's a very skinny sidewalk.
That was a sidewalk.
A very, very skinny sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay, so the state or the county, you don't have any resource for that?
They do. So what we've, what we've got active now is improving a couple blocks around the library and we're in Parisian Street in here. This is a $400,000 package, and VDOT is paying 320,000 of it. Abmar County's paying 60, and the town's paying 20.
Wow.
So we're getting, we're getting $400,000, so sidewalk for $20,000. But town council has expressed concern at work sessions in the past, that that's an awful lot of money for not very much sidewalk. And then you multiply that across all this distance. Engineering, buying the right-of-way for people if they don't donate it, building into federal specifications, paying the federal minimum wage on this, which is more American Steel inspections. It costs more than building a sidewalk into that yard.
Why is that? And why can't we see now? Your head is. No, I think it's, it's really important. I think that it's, it's a disconnect that can really draw things.
Absolutely.
I don't know any of the... I don't know any of the details of the, of the land through there, who owns what and all of that, but, um. I mean, and also are there resources for this outside of paying for it in the town?
I can think of a couple, so, yeah, you mentioned, you mentioned the first, that somebody else paid for it. So, so programs like the federal state routes to school helps build sidewalks that help, you know, teachers and parents and kids get to school without a car safely. And their radius for an elementary schooler's reasonable walking distance is too much. That gets us to Scottsville Elementary from the edge of town. So, so I, I love the potential of, you know, my wife gets a job at Scottsville Elementary and, and commutes by bicycle to work.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Um, it's a tall order, but there is federal funding for it.
Bicycle's allowed on sidewalks?
Across that bridge.
You mentioned something on this, this is something that here I presented to y'all, um. Wish it wasn't, but, um. So about five years ago, I was, I'm making a town council meeting one night, and for the first time in my life, I saw how we could connect uptown to downtown. But when Josh went to get that project done, I had one of the funniest conversations. So Josh was over the planning commission at the time, and I said, Josh, I think it's a bad idea to go through all this funding because they're gonna, they're gonna say no, but I support your effort, I think it's a step forward. I said, Josh, because the last thing you need for me to do is tell you no, you're gonna get a no, you got a no. But, but here's what I was gonna tell you, is that if you think of another way to connect uptown to downtown, so how else do you get up there? Two different ways you could do that, one is, and Matt and I talked about this before, so if you look at Route twenty, when you come up the road and you get up a little bit past the funeral home, one of the things that we have, if you go up, uh, what's the road, the private road?
Warren.
Uh, no, what's the private road, Matt, that's called, um, on the, the foot by the.
What's that, Moore's Hill?
Yeah, so if you go up Moore's Hill, if you go up that road, and then what you do is, there's, there's two different ways. One way to go is to come up, uh, basically, get, if, if we were able to get some land, is to come back down and cross Route twenty and come up and do so up by Mountain Vista Road, which is one way to cross. Another way to do it is to come from Mountain Vista Road and then come through the area below where the sewer line is and find a way where you get into all of where the bamboo is. So in other words, one of the things, if you go to where the Belt Line Trail is in Atlanta, we think of sidewalks, you actually wanna think of corridors of travel, you don't wanna just think of a sidewalk. Where I go to church in Charlottesville, Grace Community Church, there's sidewalks, there, they're full sidewalks, there are several, just very small. If we were to put a sidewalk on Route twenty below the Dollar General, honestly, I don't think I would want my, I don't, I wouldn't even think of us to walk on it. Talking about semi trucks coming up that road, it's dangerous. So forget that as a sidewalk, you think, okay, how do we come through that same area, but accomplish something? So this gets into right-of-way stuff, but there are several ways that if we get off those choke points, then you get to Mountain Vista one way, or you're, once you get up to Route twenty on where Mountain Vista is, you actually have an up access. I would be the landowner of that corner, but when you think about getting around, once you get to Mountain Vista, you could go one way or the other, you do have Mountain Vista as a road itself, where you have the opportunity to have a hub, an area of maybe doing something with Route twenty, but when you get down lower to where Scottsville is, you have to go around it. So what I'm suggesting to the planning commission is, there are a couple of ways, if we have the rights to some of the land there, we could create a corridor, whether it's a trail, whether it's a pathway, or whether it's. The other way to do it is, what's it called, Matt, who owns the land where the, where the phone company is up there, or the?
Century Link.
Century Link, so you could actually go to Century Link, and maybe there's a staircase that comes down almost to Route twenty, and either crosses over and goes into, down to where the area is below Route twenty. Or the other thing to do is, once it comes down that way, again, it crosses through the bottom part of the land above Route twenty, and it comes out about where Mountain Vista Road is. My point is, there's other, there's ways to get through there, that get past those choke points, and if we pursue some of those, it's possible we could make the connection, because in the end, an up-down, down-down connection really is important, and I think if you flip forward over thirty years, making that connection is possible. And I do think using other ways to do it, because it's just too tight down there on Downey Street, but going around anyways, Matt projects.
And, and building something that's not a VDOT spec sidewalk costs a lot. And once you're open to other kinds of trails that are not, you know, a specified concrete thickness, or exactly the right slope, you can still have something that's, you know, ADA accessible and comfortable, that isn't a VDOT-form sidewalk.
Kinda like the Rive and On Trail.
That's pretty, yeah.
So what do you all think of finding, if there's a way, if we could do some research to look at some possible corridors there? I'm not saying it's necessarily, we, we would have to get the cooperation of a, a willing landowner, we might have to do some, but, but it's, could we set out some options in the long run?
How can you safely cross Route twenty though?
Well, you can't safely cross Route twenty downtown, I mean. For real, so, so I, I actually, so if you think where Baldwin Avenue is, Baldwin Avenue, when they made the Dollar General, they actually made a really nice walkway through there, but right now it's a walkway to death. So, so, because you got down to Route twenty, so some of it would be, I, in my job, in my job, I probably in the last, I mean, you know, month and a half, I've held them fifteen UVA tours, you know, when you go around campus at UVA, the students halfway, the linens sometimes walk across the road. The culture there, the culture there is different, and it may be, as we think about how we view our town, part of it is changing the culture also, in other words, we don't, we can't stop traffic that comes through the town, but there are ways that we could have, let's just say, for example, we had a place there that was a crosswalk, and you, maybe you pushed a button, and you're halfway down there, and you cross at a certain point, and it's there, and then you cross, I mean, that could be. So there are, there are ways that we could do it, we would wanna make sure, the reason I come back to the sidewalk idea on twenty, there's, I don't know a conceivable, conceivable way where you could put a, you need like a ten or fifteen foot, a big sidewalk, so that people are away from these massive trucks that come through. So beyond that, we need to get off of that, so we wanna do the same thing, we wanna come through there safely. And again, going back to the Belt Line Trail system around Atlanta, or the High Line in New York City, the New York City High Line, I don't live with that at all. So the High Line is a trail that's still on an old railroad platform.
Trail systems are really common in Virginia, of the south western part of the state, Matt can probably talk through it, but the Huckleberry Trail is exactly what you're kind of emulating there, and that just got connected within the last ten years um, between Laxburg and Christiansburg, all the way to the, um, the, the pool center that they have in a partnership through Virginia Tech, and they have pedestrian bridges that cross it, it's one of the highest traffic areas, top, towers area.
But then that's another thing too, is you could maybe build a bridge that crosses.
But that's.
So, so the, the point of coming back to this is to say, it's a real, this is a real need, there's no question, it's a real need, and we have to think creatively of how do we meet that need and to address it. I think there's, there's possibilities here, my point, and maybe, maybe some of y'all could think better ideas than I have.
I think we should continue talking about it and coming up with ideas and maybe talking to people.
Matt and I were talking about that this morning, what, what are the, what are the best ways to improve the Tiger plant sites, since they, they acknowledge that they're gonna study this?
Yeah, uh, and I know, uh, Dan and I have been counseling and everything else since twenty-ten, I think. So I think one reason we're such good friends is because we, we respect each other's opinions. And I know he would like to see a sidewalk in front of Tiger Fuel, but that would be like the bridge to nowhere in Alaska. It's not gonna go across Mr. Childers' probably, it's steel place, so nobody's gonna get on it with that in, and nobody's gonna get on it at Nancy's here. And since Tiger owns a whole big piece of property now, if we could get something hidden in that direction, we could probably talk to them about something straight up through that property, which is pretty much safe, um. I think it would be an undue, uh, cost burden on Tiger at this point to put a million-dollar sidewalk, because they might as well walk on. What I would like to see them do is somewhere in the area of maybe the corner of the back property, of a crosswalk there. With signs and trucks and. I'm gonna try to catch up with the CEO of Tiger tomorrow, his office in here, and I'm going to kinda run that. Pedestrian.
I like it, thank you.
Do you think that would be a best form?
I really do too, and I never thought of it that way.
Well, since they do own all the property, we could, when they get ready to do something with the rest of it, a nice walkway up there, then people have a crosswalk to get over to the shopping center.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Follow the old driveway to the house. Because that's already existed.
Yeah, so, probably chat with him tomorrow, good luck.
Okay, that's a worthy conversation, thank you.
Good, I agree.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. So, so looking at this code, do, and it's hard to pay attention to look at it at the same time, but do we read this that they are required to do a sidewalk? Because on the bottom of page one fifty, the highlighted section says provisions shall be made for sidewalks, which will enable pedestrian. Um, and the first paragraph says, the planning commission, in review of site plan, may specify the number type, location, and design of access points to a public street. Um, together with, I don't know if that means sidewalk, it says access to a public street, it doesn't say sidewalks, but I mean, do we read this as a sidewalk is required?
I, I will not, um, and the, the reason why is there's, there's nothing else around it, and it, to, to what, um, the, the mayor said sidewalk to nowhere, that it didn't.
I don't really agree with that.
Okay.
Because the land next to that is vacant, and they were talking about development of that land, they were saying in the future, so this would apply there as well. You know, anytime there's any sort of changes, but there's going to be a lot more traffic coming and going from that spot. So there's, you know, there's gonna be people walking from across the street, you showed us the, the place on the, the land where people have made a path between the post office and the bank, and, yeah. So, I mean, yes, it's silly to have one section of the block having sidewalk and the rest of it not, but the goal being we wanna connect our town, and we may have to do it one block at a time.
Sure, and, and sometimes that happens, um, scattershot, that like, okay, you
When it's to be developed in.
Uh, this line, and for for now, it's sidewalk that doesn't connect anything, but you hope that it will connect further in the future, and you don't vary your design standards for that.
Right.
Um, they're, they're gonna say it's expensive and no one's gonna use it, and you'll say, in twenty years, we'll be trying to have it.
Yeah, but see, is it really all, I mean, I know it's expensive, but for them coming in and laying their foundation and all that, I don't think that, I kinda feel like.
It's, it, if you're, you're, what you were asking before about, you know, how does this get done in place for it? If it's done by a private developer in the context of other construction, it costs less, and if the town was to go back and do it ourselves later.
Yeah.
It won't be a million-dollar sidewalk for this.
So I do think it's a very important asset, but it's not necessarily a monetary. There, I mean, huge.
And, um, Mr. Hold was writing his comments that our ordinance describes standards for improvement and connects me to the comprehensive plan. And our comp plan says getting around town without a park is important, there's all kinds of reasons for that, and people need safe infrastructure to do that on. And so if you wanna insist that this final site plan includes some of that, you can't. Um, it's, it's maybe worth talking about, like, would you rather this sidewalk at five hundred feet or this trail at a thousand feet?
Yeah.
What's the best way to achieve your goals?
Yeah, I mean, if asked right now, I'd say that would be more beneficial. Uh, but.
So, so what happened last meeting was, the preliminary plan didn't have this. The commission expressed, this is important, we wanna see it in your final plan, and they're, they're working on that.
Wow, darn. Things happening behind us.
Well, the, the nice thing about that particular trail is it is a true direct connection to the Dollar General. Downside for the person, takes the right.
That's why I looked at you.
I think we wish.
I know, right? Well, we were gonna come up more similar, which is.
That's right.
So.
Well, if we make decisions here, you often have to make decisions to the best of your time.
No, it's true, and I, I.
Yeah, no, I have, well, I've already the Dollar General already, like, my, that was next to me, but I'm glad it's there.
Okay, they still have not fixed that pothole, but who do you talk to about that kind of stuff? No one knows.
I'm sorry, is there a pothole on the road, or is it in the parking lot?
Yeah, it's in the driveway. Like, you can't take right into. You have to go all the way up and around, you know, to, to get in, you can't just turn into the driveway. Because there's a pothole that's huge. You do, because it's been there for a really long time.
He doesn't go to Dollar General. Okay, so, so that I'm clear, do we read this that sidewalks are required? And we just didn't mention it in time, so we're hoping that they'll do it?
Because safe and convenient pathways are required. Sidewalks and pedestrian pathways to get safely and conveniently between the buildings. You can use that, you can also wait, so Kelsey was correct when she said, our application is not deficient. It, it showed something, and you said, okay, it meets our minimum standards, there was a higher standard that you could have held to. So I think I, I was probably unclear, and I apologize for like what, what can this have versus what does it have to have? Like, it was a, it was a, it was a C plan and not an A plan. So like, yes, it advances, you can advance it, but when you said, this doesn't show the kind of pedestrian infrastructure that we want, we need you to improve it, they're gonna take that feedback in the final plan, they'll show improvements. We were also unfortunately at time in learning that process, so you had to report something out. You couldn't iterate any more changes in the preliminary, had to move on down its line of review. But you did express okay, it's minimally compliant, but we want it better.
Does anyone think rationalization here? Oh, I don't think we had the information that we needed to do that, I, I feel really I feel responsible, I mean, I know I'm not solely on, but I, I really want to make sure that we could do.
Yeah, yeah, you need to.
I mean, I, I read this as provisions shall be made for sidewalks. It shall be done. Well, shall and may and must have their own definitions.
Um.
But I don't. I think shall is a must, like, this shall be, it shall be done, like, we'll do it. And she said, if it's in your, if it's in your ordinance, we have to do it. Yeah, so this, this is what I'm.
But if we've not shown the efficiency.
No, if it's in, if it's in the ordinance, and we brought it up at the time of the site plan and said, where are the sidewalks? So if it's in the ordinance, it doesn't matter if it was on her plan last session or not.
But, yeah, I, I, I feel okay that you got it, it's, it's doubly frustrating for me, because this is coming up new, and like, why don't we have it here?
Well, there wasn't development then.
When, when this was built, and ordinance governed the planning of this, why it hasn't had sidewalks? And ordinance governed the planning of this, why doesn't it? And ordinance governed the planning of this, why doesn't it have sidewalks?
Right, I'm hearing. Honestly, the, the Food Line side is the side I walk up, because it has. A larger shoulder.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I.
There should be, there should be sidewalks up there.
We've gotta start somewhere, and I think that the more we talk about this, the more ideas we'll come up with and things will change over time.
Yeah.
But hopefully, hopefully we can come up with the right way to approach it with Tiger Fuel and it sounds like that's what Mayor.
Yeah.
The mayor is gonna be doing tomorrow's.
Well, it sounds like the mayor's gonna give up the sidewalk to nowhere in exchange for. Which may or may not be the right plan, but I, I don't think it's a sidewalk to nowhere and I don't, I don't like that definition.
If we can ask about, I mean, I think, why don't, I know we ask.
Well, his point is maybe making a concession by doing that. You know, that would be twice as much as we require.
Well, what the other thing about it though is it may be. A different type, it doesn't, that doesn't have to be a sidewalk, it could be a trail.
Yes.
Yes.
Could be a, a path.
Which is a great idea.
And I always, I always stress that all of us will use this and it will bring them business, I think it's a good enough.
Yeah, the side, I mean, I, I think the sidewalk should be a sidewalk, I do regret, I was involved with the Dollar General, I regret that we didn't do a sidewalk. But, but going back to this, I think the sidewalk, these ladies can think are accurate with what they're saying, and then the idea of adding in. This connection that comes through in a much less expensive way, and I mean, the property itself, it's not that complicated.
Well, I know, I know that I keep telling them that goodwill, but I think it's a really good connection between Tiger Fuel and the community as well. I think it could be beneficial in that way.
Well, then it's beneficial in the sense that if, if you think about the option that they have right there. If people are actually connecting to that spot, we can't cross my property, if they're gonna do that. That's a safe way to get up to their, to their place, if otherwise they gotta walk up Valley or then go through six, and neither of those are. Six is safer, I would argue, but either way, walking through the park, that's nice, that's a nice thing, cross the park, pretty nice.
But does it go along the property that they want to sell?
Well, they'll, they'll wanna place that strategically for their future.
That makes you give them up to more cooperation on the edge of the property than asking straight for the middle of it. Yeah, yeah. And if you go, it, it, that's fine, you can go along and go wherever this.
Cause I don't have much of the.
Matt's just showing us that, that's an option.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a cool plan, you know, the sidewalk.
I, I agree, I love that idea.
Trail down to.
Yeah, we could even put like little Tiger statues on the side and make it sponsored by Tiger Fuel.
Great.
Alright, you know, you know it's late and I'm starting to get sungy and making jokes, alright.
Ties in with the town.
Exactly.
Scottville Tigers.
Scottville Tigers, oh my goodness, how come no one's made that connection before?
Wow. But what's Ron, so is Ron gonna say, tell them it's okay not to put a sidewalk in tomorrow?
I think that's what he's going to say.
I'll, I'll check in first thing in the morning.
Okay, yeah, yes, please.
I wish you had a lot, but I guess that understepped.
I'd like to leave, I'd make a motion.
You can do that.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting, is that okay, Madam Chairman? Chair, chairwoman? Great.
Alright, seconded, do we have a vote, a vote please?
Aye, alright.
Done, nine forty-three.
It shall be done, thank you.
There it is, or like you shall not pass.
Yes. You will not do this, or you will do it.